I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, October 25th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling, here. John Caesarretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzicca.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fabs.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Great, thank you. We are pleased to start with Principal Cindy Anderson, who has Ramona Student Advisory Students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Cindy Anderson, Principal at Ramona. Thank you for having us tonight. I have a few of our leaders from the Student Advisory Council, and we are really excited to be back after a year off last year. We have these fourth grade student leaders who want to tell you a little bit about what they'll be doing this year.
My name is Hudson Ward, and one thing we will be doing in Student Council is helping out with spirit days in an entire community.
My name is Lucas, and we will be helping out with assemblies for Ramona Rocks.
My name is Brian. One thing we will be doing for Student Council is service projects such as B-drives or winter clothing.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you so much for being here and telling us about that. Great job, students. We're all so thrilled to be able to introduce artwork again this month. WJHS art teacher Paige Lundee has shared seventh and eighth grade artwork that includes drawings, watercolor paintings, and digital paintings. Seventh graders studied climate change and investigated ways to protect the sky, including a review of Sky Day Project by Willmet artist Ben Whitehouse. They studied watercolor techniques and landscapes by Winslow Homer. They learned similar digital painting techniques, creating unique sky images. Eighth graders studied drawing techniques and objects using lines to represent dimension for their still life drawings. They also created social justice stickers, working with partners and debating social issues that were important to them. Then they developed an image to represent their interests using digital techniques to create five layers in the design. When you have time, we encourage you to really study these beautiful pieces. I seek a motion to approve the minutes. I move to approve the minutes of the September 27th, 2021 Board of Education and Executive Session Meetings. May I have a second?
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yay. Yay.
Yay.
The motion carries by general consent. This brings us to the, an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members here who would like to speak at this time? Don't see any. Are there any online? Okay, we do not have anyone present for public comments at this point, so we will move on to board reports, committee reports, starting with Mr. Panzicca and Facilities Development.
Thank you. On October 18th, as part of the Committee of the Whole, the Facilities Committee met. The Harper Projects for 2022 will go out to bid in November. This includes maintenance items such as boiler replacement, bathroom modernization, and roof repair. McKenzie and Ramona Projects are moving forward and are scheduled to go out to bid in January. All the projects are being reviewed with special emphasis on the timelines to complete the work this summer, so they take into account long lead time parts. So far, there's been minimal inflation trends in the whole.
Terrific, thank you very much. Mr. Caesarretti, School Finance.
Thank you, President Paling. So at the same meeting, we discussed the 2021 tax levy estimates and the 2021 supplemental debt service levy. So at the meeting, Mr. Bolzmeier provided a history of CPI over the last 21 years, noting this year is out of the norm compared to the past 20 years. He also presented new construction projects that would provide additional tax revenue for the future. He reviewed the estimated amounts of new property growths just above 14 million. He stated the levy request is estimated at 3.60% with 1.4% for CPI and 2.2% for new property growth. Mr. Bolzmeier stated, although the district is not required to comply with the truth in taxation laws, as our levy request is under 5%, the district will choose to remain transparent by publishing notice of a public hearing to be held prior to the regular board meeting in November. With respect to the 2021 supplemental debt service levy, Mr. Bolzmeier stated that the district has the option to approve a supplemental debt service levy that allows the district to capture the last 20,000 of debt service extension base for the 2021 tax levy. He said he would like to invite Elizabeth Hennessy of Raymond James to the December Finance Committee meeting to discuss the district's debt service options and any potential debt refundings. That was the meeting.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Schneider Fabs, Strategy.
So the administrative team reviewed the identified action steps for the 2021 school year. The steps reflected many of the first steps mentioned, including several evaluations and audits that are already underway, as well as teacher, staff, and administrative trainings, academic interventions, and learning recovery. Social emotional learning and school planning activities, network education events, and community support. In addition, having completed the strategic plan and planning and evaluation, representatives of the social and professional change, DDP, the administration recommended forming strategic advisors as a foundational step in ensuring the strategic implementation of the plan. Also be responsible for establishing key performance indicators for each of the strategic plan goals. This is recognized by the board and the administrative team as a critical next step in ensuring our success. In addition, the upcoming board retreat and self-evaluation is also a then, as a key step. The action steps will be presented formally for board approval at tonight's meeting. The district Strategic Advisory Team of representative stakeholders will review, inform, and evaluate implementation of the strategic plan, as well as the related annual action, action plan and performance. The purpose of the D-39 Strategic Advisory Team will be to provide input and study progress related to the strategic plan, use ongoing ways to guide improvement, action plans, and progress monitoring, as well as to suggest adjustments to planning and next steps. The D-39 Strategic Plan Advisory Team consists of certain representative stakeholders from district administration, teachers, and support unit staff, leadership, parents, educational professionals, and members of the board. An annual application process that the district committee will establish by the superintendent. At least quarterly and potentially more frequently in the first year, the team will need to review its annual action plan, as well as progress towards accomplishment. The team will help establish and review key performance indicators. Based on these reviews, the team will recommend adjustments to planning, alignment, and refinement of implementation design work and future action plans. Recommendations made to the superintendent by the Strategic Plan Advisors Meeting Team will be communicated quarterly via prior reports to the Board of Education.
Very exciting work. Thank you so much. Terrific, so we will move on to Lee's on reports. I'll start with the CRC report from Mr. Panzicca.
Thank you. The CRC met at McHalean Center October 12th. The new members were welcomed. Time was spent on reviewing rules and past procedures and practices, and then several topics were discussed for the work this year. There was a consensus to focus on social emotional learning. Members will research specifics and return next meeting with ideas of how to narrow down the scope and divide up into subcommittees. Everybody was pretty energetic. The meeting lasted quite a long time, and everybody was definitely involved, so I think they're a good group, and they'll be working hard. Thank you.
Ms. Stone, the Educational Foundation.
Yes, the Ed Foundation met here on Tuesday, October 19th, and celebrated the fact that one of its previous GRIP grants, the One Book One District, had won an award from the Association of Illinois School Library Educators. They also discussed how GRIP grant applications for the fall are due this coming Friday at 5:00 PM. There was progress discussed about the Silver Lining Project potentially being displayed at the Willmet Historical Society. The status of Lab 39 was also discussed, and a variety of events that are being planned for this year are currently in the works. There is a mix of in-person and virtual, and indoor and outdoor events that are under consideration, and the next meeting is going to be Wednesday, November 17th, at 7:00 PM here at Mac.
Great, thank you both for being there and for those updates. Mrs. Kim, the IASB.
Thank you. So at our last Committee of the Whole meeting, we went through all of the resolutions that will be voted upon at the IASB meeting in a couple of weeks, and I know that Mrs. Schneider Fabs wasn't here, and, but I welcome anybody here who has extra comments or wants to discuss anything with me prior to the vote to just give me a call, let me know.
But other than that, there's not much to report.
Okay, great, thank you for doing that, and if you'd like to go ahead with a legislative update, that would be great.
Yes, I would love to update you. No update.
Okay, the best time. Great, thank you. So let's move to information items. Dr. Krimis Goli, you can go through them.
Come on, thank you. First of all, written communications. The board received written communication from Katie Lipinski regarding mandatory mask mandates for children, D-39 teacher Peter Ower regarding not hearing board members speak at meetings due to members not speaking directly into their microphone, and I will add, thank you so much for that feedback. It has changed our practices this evening, and I am finding it easier to hear everyone as well, so hopefully our listeners at home are finding the same, as well as our participants in the further back space of this room tonight. So thank you for that feedback and for adjusting our practices. Administrative announcements, I can also run through? If that's okay. Yes, please. So first of all, we've celebrated many fall events, most of these organized in partnership with our PTOs and PTAs, and many have been organized outdoors as well. So this has really been a wonderful opportunity for us to welcome students and families back to our schools, even though it is primarily outdoors. Each of our elementary school PTAs has hosted wonderful outdoor fall celebrations for students and families, and I know our administrators and teachers and staff have enjoyed them as well. We really appreciate the partnership of and support from our PTAs. We're really grateful for their organization of these wonderful community building events. In addition, Highcrest Middle School was thrilled to host a return of their Fall Freaky Friday. That event was just hosted on Friday evening, and I hear it was incredibly well-attended, tons of fun, outdoors mostly, which was new for us, but I hear that was a tremendous success and maybe something we're thinking about repeating in the future. I think our students truly enjoyed the opportunity to share in this fun together safely. It really was a wonderful celebration, so thank you to everyone who had a hand in all of those wonderful events. I'll also share that we were proud to participate again in the ADL Walk Against Hate. Highcrest Middle School and Willmet Junior High School hosted their second annual ADL Walk Against Hate on October 10th. Students, staff, and families joined in this walk as an opportunity to move as individuals, families, and a community toward a future without antisemitism, racism, and all forms of bigotry. Thank you to everyone who participated in that. We also hosted our parent-teacher conferences. Sorry, we're getting ready to host our parent-teacher conferences. I'm getting ahead of myself. We're looking forward to it very much. We'll be hosting parent-teacher conferences in mid-November. Parents received an email on Friday with the details for scheduling, and registration opened today, so I know that many of our parents jumped right on to secure their ideal appointment time. Thank you for that. I know our teachers are very eager to meet with our parents. Most of those are being held remotely again this year, so hopefully that's convenient for many, many parents to participate, and we appreciate all that our teachers do to plan for a really meaningful conference with our parents. Thank you for that. I'll also mention the IAR results, which are the State Accountability Results of Academic Achievement. It's the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. District 39 has received the individual student reports of IAR, and so those student reports, those were from tests that were administered, administered, excuse me, last spring, so spring 2021. Those reports just came in and we're in the process of getting them out to families. The results reflect English language charts and math achievement for the 2020-2021 school year. It is important to note that right now, school districts have only received their individual results. We haven't received yet the school-based results, those aggregate results or the district results. The state has just started to share some information regarding statewide results, but have also mentioned repeatedly that those are preliminary. This year in particular, school districts had the option of administering the test in the spring, as we did, and as I understand it, most districts did, but some districts chose to wait until the fall to administer that assessment, and so it's causing quite a bit of additional work at the state level to aggregate all of those results and get them to school districts. So families should look for their IAR reports to be coming home, along with a memo that gives them access to some additional information. We are eager to receive some additional information from the state as that data becomes available. We expect it sometime in November and then publicly released, we expect, in December. So provided we, as a district, receive those results sometime in November, it is our plan to provide the board with a summary of those results at the November board meeting. So we're very hopeful. I know the state is working overtime to make sure that districts can get those results. Again, they are a little delayed from what we typically would have seen, and so we are eager to see what those results might tell us about how we can make adjustments in our program. You'll see later on this evening's agenda, CRC members at large, our CRC is the Community Review Committee. Mr. Panzicca spoke of that earlier. That serves as an advisory capacity to our district to research specific topics that will lead to improvements in teaching, learning, or managing the district's operations. In the fall, the CRC selects one or more topics of interest and then researches that and brings that report back to the Board of Education and to me as superintendent by the end of the school year. We're really excited about the topic that they've chosen this year and see it aligning very, very well with our strategic plan. We appreciate their forward-thinking and planning to make sure that the research they're doing really helps to align with the work that we are trying to accomplish as well. That alignment is so critically important, as you'll hear later when we talk about our action steps for this year. The CRC is comprised of parents, typically two representing each of the schools in the district, and invites parents from the parochial schools to participate as well. There are administrators, there are teachers, and there are citizens as well who participate in that group. The Board of Education has a representative who participates in the CRC meetings as well. Thank you, Mr. Chris Panzicca, for sharing your experiences at the most recent meeting. And in accordance with the Articles and Bylaws of the CRC, the Board of Education must approve the members at large. So there are three members at large recommended to the Board of Education for approval this evening, and I know that they are eager to serve on this important committee, so thank you for your consideration of them.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So are these people not represented in any of the other groups?
That's correct. The other positions were already full, and so they are serving in a different capacity this year. Some are returning members of the CRC, and others are simply members who wish to serve, and they're additional members of the committee. Katie, would you add anything else there?
Yeah, most often, community members are parents who represented a school before. They have exceeded their two years, then they, and they want to stay involved. Their third year, they submit as a community at large.
Okay, I understand. I thought maybe they were people who are not teachers and, you know, and not, and didn't have kids in the school, but were like community members at large.
Yeah, so it could be a combination.
Okay.
So I do know, I can recognize at least two of the names here that they do have children in the schools, it's just they wanted to serve a third term, and according to the Bylaw, we need to make them community at large. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Regarding those three members. Moving on then, the district Strategic Advisory Team, that was discussed earlier and will be discussed further when we get to our action steps this evening. We really recognize this is a key next step in our leadership for planning and review of our strategic plan implementation. We have started, launched our recruitment effort just on Friday with a survey and application process to our teachers and staff. We do hope to have a teacher from every school and a staff member from every school serving on this important team. An invitation will also be extended to parents, with first invitations going to those who either served on our Strategic Plan Core Team last spring or the CRC. Two representatives of the board are also invited to serve on this team, along with administration from our district, and we've set the first meeting to be held on Thursday, November 18th. Really excited about this team. We know that this represents kind of a different way of leading, planning, and evaluating our work, and so we're excited to get started with this team. And then the Freedom of Information Act, we did receive one. Heidi Baker from SmartPro Pure submitted a commercial FOIA requesting all current employee and staff contact information and work locations. And that concludes our report. Happy to answer any questions.
None, I think we can go ahead with the strategic plan updates.
Excellent. I will share my screen, and our team together will provide this presentation. Give me just a second so that I can get to write you. Okay, so as the board will recall, and hopefully our community will as well, we've embarked on a strategic planning process which has provided us a five-year plan, which really highlights our mission, our vision, our goals and strategies over the next five years of what we hope to accomplish. And annually, we know that we will have to really detail out an action step plan that we hope to, that will, that we hope will advance our goals and strategies. And so thank you, Board, for your feedback at the most recent Committee of the Whole meeting. We've incorporated your feedback into this evening's presentation, so most will seem familiar, but we will highlight a couple of key areas. So this evening, we together are giving an overview of the 2021-2022 strategic action steps. As the board suggested, we wanted to give just a little bit of a view back into what our prior strategic planning process looked like, so that we could also highlight some of the things that look and feel a little bit differently in this new plan. Katie Lee is going to remind us of what our old planning process looked like annually and then highlight some of those key differences.
Yeah, some of the higher-level ideas is presented here on this slide for you. We recognize that there are new members of the board that weren't part of the process, and you are aware of our current process now. But, so I, the numbers on your screen correspond with one another, so I'll just go in order of 1 and 4 and 2 and 2. So the first thing that we wanted to share is prior to this strategic plan process, the District 39 administration, with community engagement from the Community Review Committee, developed and worked through the development of the strategic plan annually. So our community engagement was really primarily through the CRC, and they're a multi-stakeholder group, so there were teachers involved, and there was administrators involved, and community members involved. However, this year, I believe that you would agree that we've extended beyond that and included more of the community, more of every member of our community, and that's why we feel that the multi-stakeholders are invested even further into this process and more aware of our process moving forward. Now, as far as the district goals, you know, one thing that District 39 has always done is worked according to our mission and vision. And so prior to our new mission and vision language, the district goals were expressed as initiatives. So in the former plan, you noticed that each of the sections had a particular title. It would be, you know, student achievement or growth. It would be learning comments. Those were what we called initiatives that supported our mission and goals, but it was expressed as that, as an initiative. This year, I think the goals really are explicitly stated, so that what we are aligning to the mission and vision and the portrait of District 39 scholar for the next five years, those kind of topics are more supportive of the explicitly stated goals. So if I may, I could use the learning comments as an example. Prior to 2021, that alone would have been its own category, with action steps that supported and a multi-year plan of how to, you know, complete that project. But what this particular development process does is it says, hey, we want to do these learning comments, here are the goals that it supports, and we are making sure that it's aligned with those goals. The initiatives prior to 2021 become goals with its own set of action steps and progress through three different phases, developing, implementing, and reflecting. And so there were different lengths of time that an initiative could last on a plan, so it could be just a one year, it could be a two year, it could be a three year, as we acknowledge that some initiatives took multiple years. This year, and moving forward, the initiative become action steps supportive of the long-term goals and strategies. For us, we feel that those are benchmark years where we can see, hey, by the end of year one, how did we progress? Where are we? What do we need to adjust in order to accomplish in year two and so on? This is a slightly different way of framing how we would be monitoring our progress day, which leads to the last one. So prior to this, we had an annual view of progress that was presented to the Board of Education. We did mid-year updates, right, and then end-of-year updates to the board, and it was also available online in the form of video, in the form of the board reports. I think that what's a huge added benefit of this new process is that we would be monitoring the improvement cycles throughout the year. We're presenting to not just the board annually, but also online, on top of the district Strategic Advisory Team, helping us monitor our progress and giving us feedback along the way. So, you know, I think both processes are great, but I think this current one and moving forward just really focuses our attention and reminds us of what the main goals are and really sets those priorities explicitly to every stakeholder. You know that everything we're going to do is encompassed in the five goals that we have to do. I couldn't answer any questions about this part. Okay?
Thank you, Katie, that was great.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the background's very helpful.
Katie, and again, I think, as Katie mentioned, it's kind of a reframing, a focus first on our mission and vision, which then lead us to the goals and strategies, and we're really focused in a long-term way in accomplishing that, that vision of success. And so it's an alignment with, with the work that we're doing. We're really excited about that. As we think about the strategic planning process again... As we think about the strategic planning process, again, uh, something else that was slightly different in our planning process this time is that we did uh, go out. The board was very clear. They wanted um, some support for this work and expert in strategic planning to come in and support our planning efforts. CEC was the chosen organization and specifically chosen, I think, because of the engagement opportunities, their emphasis on stakeholder engagement across all um, the, all stakeholders in the entire community. And so, um, not only did they focus on engagement, but they also focused on that cyclical process of improvement. Starting from readiness, really evaluating where we are, identifying our, our, our vision and our mission, our goals and our strategies, and then having a cyclical evaluation process. So we did start with our mission. Who are we and why do we exist? Leading to our vision, what must we become? What do we hope and aspire to be in five years? And what are our values? That led us to define the goals and strategies. How will we gauge our success and what will we do differently to succeed? This is our strategic plan. It is a five-year plan and it starts with our mission, but very much focuses on our portrait of a District Thirty-nine scholar which are supported by our core values. Our vision is there, focused on engaged learning, an empowered mindset in an inspired community, which lead us to the goals, what we hope to accomplish over these next five years. Our goal areas focus on student achievement and growth, on a supportive community, on our professional community, family partnerships and stewardship of resources. So we moved from our goals and our strategies into really thinking about how can we establish success. Our next steps were to look at the action plan, the annual action plan for this year and how we can set the board up for the greatest success possible. Um, we're right now at the point of presenting our action plan and also developing a promotional campaign as well. We know that a key next step is identifying the key performance indicators. And we recognize that we should not do that in isolation as an administrative team alone. We really want to continue the stakeholder engagement to ensure that those key performance indicators really reflect the mission, vision and values of our entire community. So we learned a little bit about foundational work and as we did so, we realized we have some work to do in our district, not only in terms of our goals and the strategies, but in the way in which we lead our district through the initiatives that we identify. We took the time to really evaluate ourselves, um, using the CEC and their Strategic Management Group partnership. We learned about the eight dimensions of strategic management and about how we can really focus on doing the right things and doing the right things well. We, in, in doing that, recognized that we needed to share leadership for this plan. If we are truly to engage our community and make this a living plan that everyone is supportive of, um, a district strategic advisory team will help us to do that. And so we have proposed to the board, uh, the creation of a district strategic advisory team. That being a representative stakeholder group that will provide leadership, collaborative decision-making and ongoing progress review and monitoring. Uh, Lisa did a nice summary of our strategic strategy advisory team. We do recognize this to be a relatively large group of representative stakeholders. We really want to empower this team to review, inform and evaluate implementation of our plan as well as the related annual action planning and performance, to provide input and to study our progress and really guide our improvements, our action plans and our progress monitoring, as well as making adjustments along the way. So we recognize this is really a key first step and that group's first responsibility will be to help us establish and review the key performance indicators, the KPIs, in each goal area. We really want to make sure that the chosen metrics are metrics that everyone understands and ascribes to so that we know, again, what are we aspiring toward in each of these goal areas? How are we measuring and monitoring our progress? Ultimately, we hope that our key performance indicators will establish in each goal area what will indicate success and how we are measuring progress toward that success. So again, we see this as a foundational step for the district strategic advisory team to assist us with. We very much hope at the end of this year, we will not only have those key performance indicators identified, but we'll have a dashboard created that would reflect those in an ongoing way. So we can, again, study, review and reflect the progress that we're making. We also see that progress monitoring and reporting will happen on an annual basis, probably three times a year. Um, and, and that we will continue to monitor and make adjustments as we go. Again, something that's a little different than what we used to do in, in our ongoing review and evaluation of the progress that we are making. As we mentioned during the committee of the whole meeting, this year is a little bit different because the strategic plan was just approved last month and so we're um, we're catching up to this cycle, but in future years, we would expect the strategic, the action steps to be presented uh, during the uh, September meeting so that we can jump right into the work. Uh, this year, we're kind of doing both at the same time. We also know that the board has identified some leadership responsibilities for our strategic plan and we really appreciate that leadership that you'll be providing. The board recognized a board self-evaluation and really uh, some training on how to lead a strategic plan could be very, very helpful. And so, the board has taken the initiative to plan for that retreat to occur. We have it scheduled for December sixth. And with that, we want to review the action steps. We recognize that each goal area needs a goal champion. I think we've identified two for each goal area. And so our goal champions will not only take leadership and responsibility for those goal areas, but we're pleased to have them here tonight to review the action steps for this first year of foundational work. For goal one, student achievement and growth, Katie Lee and I are the goal champions. The goal is to ensure a differentiated education that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning. The strategies that we've identified are to differentiate instruction and supports to ensure and monitor a strong academic foundation of challenging, meaningful and growth-oriented experiences for all students. Implement structured staff collaboration focused on data-informed practices to support rigorous achievement and growth for all students and to provide differentiated professional development opportunities to support effective, innovative and growth-focused classroom practices. Katie, can I share a little bit more?
Yep, and um, at the bottom of that first slide, I just wanted to uh, point out that the key performance indicators will be added later with the advisory team, um, helping us establish those. So as far as the action steps, you know, we feel that um, this is an opportunity to dig deep and also to learn more about um, you know, what we need to do however, while we are addressing student achievement and growth along the way. So the first three um, speaks to some of that learning and digging in deep and, and being a little vulnerable and looking at what we have in place. So what I'd like to do is audit the classroom level assessments for reading, writing, math in order to identify any gaps and needs. What are they? How are we seeing these things differently? Um, audit classroom level instruction, you know, our teaching strategies and tools in order to find um, any gaps and needs there as well. Um, including auditing the supplemental interventions, teaching strategies and tools in order to identify any gaps and needs and think in what ways that we could provide interventions differently. Um, we are also engaging administrators and learning and training um, through Harvard's uh, DataWise Improvement Process. Uh, we'd like to improve the way in which we facilitate staff data meetings, analyze student data in order to better target instruction and also improve collaborative conversations. Um, we are engaged in training LBSs, our Learning Behavior Specialists in Orton-Billingham or Wilson Reading Strategies to increase efficacy in reading instruction for students with disabilities. And uh, we are completing an evaluation, review and analysis of special education programming and services to identify areas of strength and need within, with the assistance of Atlantic Research Partners, which you've referred before. Um, continuing our data meetings with improved structure and focus on grade level and student level data analysis in order to identify and refer students with intervention needs, whether it be support or enrichment or both in reading and math. Um, strengthening our primary reading instruction, assessment and intervention for elementary students is also one of our action steps we'd like to focus on this year.
Okay, our second goal is supportive community. And for this one, uh, Kelly Jackson and I are the goal champions for it. So the goal is to cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional and behavioral needs of each student. And the strategies are to implement a consistent and proactive curriculum addressing social, emotional and behavioral needs of students and to strengthen the sense of belonging, engagement, representation and agency for students through diverse welcoming opportunities for community building, leadership and student-to-student connection. And as Katie shared, um, the key performance indicators for this will also be determined in partnership with that district strategic advisory team.
So, um, similar to uh, the first goal, we are going to begin by taking a deep dive um, specifically into uh, positive behavior systems and assessments. So we will audit school and classroom level uh, behavior systems and assessments in order to identify strengths and areas for improvement. And that includes inventorying positive, current positive behavior practices throughout the district, um, kind of seeing what's there, um, including classroom systems and school-based systems and then analyzing those strength, uh, strengths and weaknesses of those systems. Um, we will investigate district-wide positive behavior systems in order to make recommendations for implementation. So the audit will hopefully lead to some recommendations for where we go next. Um, we will also investigate methods of progress monitoring and data collection related to student behavior and make recommendations in that area and identifying the number of students needing behavioral intervention outside of the classroom and the types of interventions used. Uh, finally, in the area of the, oh no, sorry, this is, I skipped ahead. Um, next, it for the social, emotional systems of support. We actually have started that work and will continue that through developing and implementing a social, emotional system of support using district-wide framework and approach. Um, you've heard us talk about the um, competencies and responsive classroom training that we've recently done. Um, and so that is all a part of that develop and implementing. Um, along with that, we plan to uh, take a deeper dive into social, emotional learning assessment tools. Um, we currently use the DESSA, which is the Deveraux Student Skills Assessment, um, at Kindergarten or EC through second grade and the MESH, uh, which is Mindset's Essential Skills and Habits, um, for uh, third through eighth grade. And um, we want to look at those assessments, um, really help teachers understand um, the different parts of those assessments, what that can use, what, what can be used in the classroom and evaluate their effectiveness for that role. Um, or see if there's other tools that might meet those needs in a better way. We will also plan for future professional development needs based on the um, current implementation and what is needed next. Um, next, kind of like what I was talking about before, plan and engage staff and data focus and inform data meetings at the grade and classroom level in order to identify students with intervention needs and social, emotional skill development. Um, and that again is using the DESSA and MESH along with other things that are going on in the classrooms. And then finally, um, this is what we recently decided, um, at our most recent uh, CRC meeting, but we want to partner with the Community Review Committee to research best practices to engage and communicate with parents in support of social, emotional learning and programming within our schools. So we, we noticed there was a little bit of a vacancy there in that way that we're communicating what we're doing in the classroom. And so CRC has recommended to partner with us and, and really investigate what, how to communicate best, what parents need to know and what other schools are doing. So we look forward to that one.
Um, the third goal is professional community. Um, foster a professional community that values, supports, develops and retains highly effective staff. And the strategies we've identified is improve collaborative and shared decision-making structures to strengthen representation, engagement and agency for staff, cultivate a more equitable and inclusive learning community by developing staff expertise to support diverse learners through differentiated instruction and culturally supportive teaching. And the goal champions are Heather Colletti and myself.
The action steps related to goal three. We've talked about one a lot tonight, which is the district strategic advisory team. So that'll be our first course of action. We're making sure the team is established and we have a system by which we can get feedback and help refine the work that we're doing for all of our goals, not just goal three. We will also be looking at our school and work calendars to try and identify and create professional development and training framework that will be more supportive and allow us to tackle the training and the work that we've once done within the constraints that we have within our current calendar and. The next action step is to provide opportunities for staff to get together and build a sense of community throughout the district, not just within one school, but across the district. And we started that work a little bit last uh, early summer when we had an event for staff and families. And so we're looking for opportunities to help connect across the district for all staff and. We'll also be seeking information from staff, key points throughout their careers to learn more about their onboarding experience and mentoring experiences as well as ongoing support as they become part of the District Thirty-nine community. Looking for themes, what can we do better? What have we done well? And what should we be looking at towards the future as new staff join our community? And the last action step for this year will be to continue to encourage and engage with staff at our various committees that we have both at the district level and at the school level to make sure all voices um, have an opportunity to be heard and have an opportunity to have a vision going forward.
Goal four, family partnerships. Kelly Jackson and I are the goal champions. Strengthen partnerships by connecting, collaborating and communicating with families and communities to advance teaching and learning. The strategies include improve school-home communication through consistent and effective strategies, especially those focused on communicating student performance, goal-setting and growth monitoring. Also, implement strategies to better support s- uh, successful transitions from fourth to fifth grade and sixth to seventh grade for students and parents.
So our first action step in this area is to build a strategic communications plan for District Thirty-nine and individual schools to keep stakeholders updated on progress while continuing to build awareness. And that will include goals and objectives, the target audience, some key message messages and measures of evaluation. Secondly, providing district-wide monthly parent education events to facilitate student social, emotional, academic growth and progress monitoring. This is something that we've already started. However, um, as a follow-up to that, we would like to start to solicit feedback from attendees regarding to what extent the programs have met their needs and um, make adjustments based on those suggestions. Finally, we are developing a comprehensive transition plan for fourth to fifth grade that accounts for identified areas of need based on student and parent surveys and feedback. So, uh, we've finalized our process of gathering initial feedback from parents and students about our most recent transition process. Um, we're looking to that feedback to help us um, put in some uh, steps to improve as we move forward. We're also engaging with our special education teams and looking at the transition processes there. Um, and uh, looking at how do we communicate to parents? Are we meeting their needs through the transition process, both with information and on a social level? So, how are we um, providing opportunities for students to interact socially and parents to interact socially across the schools before they get to high crust?
Goal five is focused on the stewardship of resources. Cory and I will be heading up this work. Our goal is to ensure the effective use of resources to sustain practices that promote growth. Strategies include implementing long-term capital planning focused on facility maintenance as well as examining resource allocation practices, including staffing based on best instructional models and.
There were five action steps related to goal five for twenty-one, twenty-two year. The first is review five-year capital improvement plan biannually with a focus on facility maintenance and upgrades to sustain practices that promote growth. Review process for prioritizing building-based capital improvement projects. Three, develop cost estimates for projects in the next five to seven years, leading to a prioritized project list with estimated completion dates. Four is monitor legislative adjustments related to property tax funding formulas, real estate tax appeal refunds and pension cost shifts to anticipate, consider and plan for potential impact on District Thirty-nine availability of resources. Incorporating findings into the presentation of the annual five-year projections, which we do uh, at the December meeting. Identify a process. Identify a process to explore and evaluate class size and staffing patterns across non-home room instructional environments at the five through eight grade level to identify where under or over enrollment patterns may emerge.
And with that, we again want to say thank you to the strategic plan for setting forward our mission and vision, our goals and strategies. And we very much are excited about the action steps that have been identified. There's a lot of work laid out ahead of us. We're eager to get started, and we're very much hopeful that our new mindset will lead to some new results, and we're eager to partner with our community as we endeavor upon those. With that, I'm happy to take feedback, questions, comments. Again, this will be, this is recommended later on the agenda for approval by the Board of Education. I, we listened to this all last week, but listening to it again and sort of synthesizing it, it is a strikingly impressive list of things to take on for one year. So it's very exciting and ambitious, but I think it's just incredible work, having seen the whole process. It's so emblematic of all the input we got from our whole community. And we are able to accomplish the things on those goals for this year. I think that's remarkable, really exciting for our district.
I really liked the graphic summary. Super helpful. And I know that it's a lot of work. I think Strategic Advisory Committee built off the work that we did with COVID and models a new way of being since we've gotten here, that's been rolling. I really like that. So hats off. I know that's a lot of work, but it was done in a very short amount of time.
Yeah, I'm really excited. It's the quality of the plan, the quality of the people executing on the plan, it's just, it's fantastic. There's a lot of substance here, which is not always the case with strategic planning, but this is like 99.9% substance from what I can tell. So that's also exciting. It's really great and ambitious. So I'd say, let us know if you need more resources.
Thank you. I will say, listening to our goal champions review the action steps again this evening, there is a lot here, a lot to accomplish. And that includes the work wrapped up in the foundational work of setting the stage for this plan implementation with the Strategic Advisory Team and the key performance indicator. So there is a lot to be done. We really are excited to get started, but we recognize this year as a key foundational year to our ongoing success. So we appreciate the hard support of that work. Annual Business. Okay, thank you. Under annual business, we have a review of the tax year 2021 estimate of levy. Corey Boltmeyer will provide the board with that review.
All right, thank you. One of the requirements as part of our annual tax levy approval process is to go through the process of how the district calculated, and then a detailed calculation of the estimated 2021 tax levy. So our tax levy calendar for this year, as always, has multiple steps within the process. Last Monday, at the Finance Committee, we reviewed, for the first time, an estimate of the 21 tax levy. Tonight, we will review it again at the Board Meeting, and then we will ask the Board to approve that estimated levy and then also the public hearing announcement. The public hearing will be posted in the paper on November 4th. It can be posted no more than 14 days before and no less than seven prior to the public hearing. Then on November 15th, at the Board of Education hearing meeting, we would ask the Board to adopt the 2021 tax levy, and then by the last Tuesday of December, the district would need to file that. So just to some background on the tax levy, local property taxes represent over 84% of the district's total revenue. The calculation of the levy amount is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law or PTO. Many people commonly refer to it as the tax caps. PTO limits the operating funds levy to an increase in the prior year's extension plus CPI plus an addition of new growth or construction. And one thing to note about that is that if districts do not choose to capture that, they lose forever that operating revenue. And there's only one way to go back and capture that, and that would be through an operating revenue. Levy considerations, there are kind of three big things that go into the levy. The EAV, which is the equalized assessed value of properties within the district's boundaries, as determined by local and county assessors. The CPI or Consumer Price Index, published by the federal government, as a measure of annual inflationary impact. And then new property growth, which is just property in the district that has been newly developed and assessed during that particular tax year. So this particular slide shows the relationship of CPI and how it impacts multiple years in the tax levy process. So last calendar year, 2020, we saw a 1.4% CPI. That then flows into the 2021 tax levy. Taxpayers in our community will pay those taxes in 2022, and that will impact the 2023 district year budget. This slide shows over the last 10 years, new growth, total EAV, change in EAV, and then percent change on the far right column, any of the numbers that are bolded percentages, that's when this particular township gets reassessed, which happens every three years. So you can see from 19 to 20, the existing EAV was basically flat. And then when you look at the second column, you see our new growth. We saw 12.1 million. We had anticipated about 14.2 last year. And now our 10-year average is just over, just a little bit over 14 million, which we will use in our estimated formula. Limiting rate is another key component to the calculation process, and that's the rate that gets applied for the operating funds and then gets applied to the new growth. And so how we calculate that is, is we take last year's extension plus the annual amount for CPI. So we have 56.8 million times 1.014. And then we would divide that by the total EAV, subtract out any new growth the county identifies for this levy year. And we're estimating that that would produce a limiting rate of 2.9789. And District 39's portion of the taxpayer bill is expected to increase by a CPI amount of 1.4%.
That's the key piece that we always like to highlight there, because there's a lot of math going into everything else behind the scenes. But for a typical taxpayer, a taxpayer bill, District 39's portion of the average taxpayer bill will increase by CPI of 1.4%.
The next slide shows the relationship and the value of new property growth and why we find it to be so important. The first column, when you go towards the bottom, you see that the district would receive 57.6 million for the tax levy with just a 1.4% CPI increase, or about $800,000. Then we slide over to the middle column, and we see that we jump up to 58.0 million. And we saw the value of that new growth of 14 million, 22,000, equates to about 418,000, or an additional 0.74% on top of the 1.4%. And as we just noted, that that additional amount would be paid entirely by the owner, the taxpayers of that new property. And then in the far right column, that represents our recommended levy request. And the reason that that is a much higher amount is that the county does not tell us ahead of time what our new growth will be. And so we need to levy or request a higher amount than, to make sure that we can capture all of that in any given year. So our total request is 3.6%, 1.4 being CPI and 2.2 being growth. And then this last slide shows by fund last year's final tax extension. And then the middle column has the 2021 estimated tax extension, so that's what we are anticipating to get. So we are anticipating to go from 56.8 to 58.0. And then the far right column just represents our request by fund, which is 58.87, or 3.6% higher than the 2020 final tax extension. And with that, I will end the presentation. And just before we open up for questions, the one, the next thing on the agenda is that we will ask the Board to do is approve the tax levy public hearing. And that is just a procedural thing where the Board approves public hearings. And that is something that the district is doing as an additional measure of transparency. Done it for many years. It's not required since our request is below 5%. But as I said, as a measure of transparency, the district has to do that as well. With that, I will open up to any questions.
I wanted to thank you for the presentation. There's a lot of really good and complicated data in here, so I appreciate you stepping through it and even more important, compiling it so that we could look at it. And like I said, I particularly wanted to highlight the, some of the slides where you had the year-over-year historical data. I think that really helps put in perspective what we're doing and what we have done. So again, I appreciate the work that went into the stack and the background work that you had to do for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. So I mean, I think, without going into a five-hour seminar on Illinois taxation, it's a really good presentation. So we really appreciate the work you've done, and I think we have a lot of confidence in it. And we talk about the levy all the time, so the taxpayers know that we're aware and care, obviously. And I think we all think this makes sense.
Okay, we can move on to Board Policy. Excellent. Under Board Policy, oops. All right, so under Board Policy, we are reviewing Sections 1 and 2 of Board Policy Manual. During this revision, we are working to more closely align the D39 Policies to PRESS, which is the IASB Service of Policy. This alignment is very helpful when referring to policies. Often ISBE grants, et cetera, refer to policies based upon the PRESS model. And so aligning with PRESS is really helpful to us. It also allows us to align with what is the gold standard in terms of school attorney review and the Board's agency with IASB. The revisions continue to be reviewed by the Board's attorney, as not all recommendations by PRESS are agreed upon by all the legal firms. So this external legal review is yet another check on our policies revisions. For these specific policies, there are three proposed policies for adoption. That's 2:40, 2:50, and 2:60. And I may have stolen Heather Glouacki's statements, but I'll let Dr. Glouacki add on if there's anything more that she'd like to add. Thank you. So these are recommended for first reading this evening, and it is the Board's opportunity now to review and provide feedback on those first reading policies. There's a number of them here, and we're welcome to any feedback, suggestions, or discussion on each of those policies. So there is discussion to be had, so maybe the best way to do it is just if you have something to bring up or address that individual policy and then move on to any others. So who would like to bring one up? Mr. Caesaretti?
Frank, yeah, I, these are really interesting policies that we have here as they relate to the Board and our qualifications, our terms of office, and whether we can be removed and how. So there's lots to talk about here.
It's important to know all of those things, to have them spelled out. Did you want to start with any particular one?
I don't even know where to start any.
Okay.
I was loving the removal from office and wondering if we could expand on it. So I guess I'm first curious about, I don't know what PRESS is. I think you defined it, but I didn't hear it.
So the Illinois Association of School Boards, of which our Board is a member, also provides a policy service. PRESS is the name of the policy service. I'm sorry, it's an acronym for something. I can't remember what it's exactly an acronym for. But it is a service provided by the Illinois Association of School Boards. It essentially gives you exemplar policies that meet the requirements of Illinois School Code and all of the grants and other legal requirements. They provide to you, via us really, the exemplar policies, which then we review compared to our old policies and update accordingly. We then ask the Board's attorney to review those revisions and provide us with feedback before bringing it to the Board for first reading. What happens then, as you know, the Board reviews and provides us additional feedback. We then circle back with our attorneys before we come back for second reading and final approval.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, so if I were to say anything constructive here, on 2:60, I have mixed feelings about this one. I see, I see a reason for it. But then again, you know, this, we're dealing with elected public officials who may or may not agree on everything that has happened. And, you know, there may be a particularly unpopular member of a Board for one reason or another. So, you know, I don't know if that's such a bad thing, but I think I would like personally to understand, you know, what these conditions of, I guess, willfully failing to perform their duties, you know, would constitute. Because I'd hate to see a situation where you have someone with really unpopular opinions sort of being voted out of office on some kind of pretext around willful failure.
Yeah, I had some interesting questions on this one also. I guess the first one, it looks like this is new. Was there anything at all in the policies before related to removal of a Board member? I mean, I assume there is something along the lines of, you know, got arrested and was in jail or something like that. But was there anything actually documented before, or is this brand new?
I don't believe that it was actually documented, supposedly before.
Can I interject? Because I think I looked at the School Code at some point, and I'm not a lawyer, or you know, whatever, I'm an accountant, certified, whatever. Anyway, and I think in the School Code, it's, there's more here about who can remove, you know, a school board member. But I'm not sure what it is. But it's a really good question, Frank.
Well, I would point the Board to its Policies 2:40, Qualifications of a Member of a Board of Education.
Yeah, so that, that actually kind of, I mean, I read through the policies that are in here, in the grouping for tonight, and the wording, at least in are in here in the grouping for tonight, and the wording, at least in, in my reading, doesn't quite match up. The policies in here talk about the powers of the board. And this particular thing says that the board member fails to perform the members' official duty. So is there an enumerated list of members' duties as opposed to board duties?
So the current policy refers the board to policy 220, Powers and Duties of the Board of Education. And again, this language is actually almost exactly the same under 2:40 with the adjustment per board request of pronouns, removing his and her. Beyond that, it is actually the, almost the identical language. The other clarification is the current policy lists regional superintendent. We actually work within an intermediate service center rather than a regional superintendent. And so that was clarified as well.
So I, I guess, again, I can't even claim to have a law degree and not use it, but I can read these things. And I'm, I'm having a hard time, when I look at 220, in the first phrase, it says the board and the duties of the board. And when you read through the duties, a lot of them are things like, you know, signing off on establishing the school year, which are activities of the board, not of a specific board member. But then 260 says willfully failed to perform the members' official duty. And I'm having a real hard time, you know, combining those two. It's like, as an individual board member, if you disagreed with the school calendar, I mean, it, I, I just don't see how this is written to, I mean, I would expect that there would be a policy that says the official duties of a board member and enumerate individual board duties, even if it was as owners as saying, you know, must attend nine out of 12 meetings or something. But there isn't any list that I could find.
I wonder if it goes back to our oath. I was going to say 2:80. I don't know if this is what you're exactly seeking, but I would maybe start there. To your point, Amy, with the oath.
Yeah. That, that's the way I had connected them because that's what we are as individuals, not as a collective board, meaning to do. So it's about respecting text, their interest, and the expression of opinion. Those are individual behaviors.
Right. So, so then, I mean, again, back to this particular 260, things like I shall strive to work together with the superintendent. I mean, I'm just looking at worst-case interpretations of this of some future, not this board, but some future board. It's willfully failed to perform the member's duty. And if there's some school board member that didn't strive to work together with the superintendent, would that qualify then as under the fairly small wording in here as not performing the duties? And would that then give an opportunity for literally just a forum, four people to vote on that member being removed from the board even though they were elected by the community, not by the board? So I, and so that's, that's one set of questions. The other part is the bar to remove somebody that's been elected to be a forum of other elected officials seems awfully low. That there'd be some kind of arbitration board, there'd be a, you know, super majority. I mean, I'm not attempting to define it, but four people on the board saying somebody didn't get along with the superintendent and wasn't striving to work together, will vote that person out even though they're elected by the community seems not the intent of what we would want to do, but isn't specifically excluded, by the way this is written.
So maybe I would help if I could get clarification from the board's attorney about what happens when this request is made to the intermediate service center superintendent, our regional office of superintendent. If, if a request were to go to him to remove someone, what would those steps look like? That's not spelled out here. It just says a request will go to the intermediate service center. And I wonder if we could clarify what would then happen? Is it automatic or is there a process, a due process by which you're, I think, expressing here?
So it's, like I said, there's several steps here. One step was what are the enumerated duties? And the duties as defined on 2:80 are, are not numerically precise. I mean, like I said, failed to work with is kind of a soft requirement if that's what you're going back to saying that they didn't perform their duty. So that would be one. The other would be if four or more people voted to remove an elected official. Is that, it can't be that that's done. I mean, if that policy to remove the elected official, that would surprise me. But what are, what are the next steps? What does that really mean? And how can it be documented into it? So there's, there's a number of those type of things that I think philosophically that there's some way to remove a board member if they do something really egregious is one thing, but this is imprecise enough that it could be literally that we don't like somebody.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for our next discussion. Is there any other policies in this that people wanted to discuss? Just, and again, this is just our first meeting, so we'll circle back to these.
Can I ask a very small question? So is there a difference between school board and Board of Education? Is, is there a difference in meaning?
I don't think so. School board and Board of Education are used synonymously.
Okay, because I see that, like, you know, it's crossed out and, and changed into, and I was just wondering why.
It may be updating the language, but that's another clarification we can ask for.
It has looked to me like it's becoming more consistent, you know, there.
I don't know.
You're moving from, from school board to Board of Education? Is that right?
Sort of what I've seen, but I don't know if that's the intent. I think the history here, just as I understand it, as a relatively newer leader in this district, I think that the, the previous boards set forward policies that sometimes aligned with press but did not always. And so what ended up happening then is some, some of those policies were written first and then reviewed by the attorney rather than taking the press policy as the first exemplar. And so we see some of that nuanced language where the school board is kind of the, the friendly way of saying Board of Education. And so if someone were just writing as we speak, you might say school board when really Board of Education is the more official title of that, I think, is what's happened. And so when we start first from press, we're going to start first from more of the official terminology and then. Other topics to discuss at this point on these? So we do have a second and final reading of the Board of Education policy 7:180, which we discussed recently about bullying. So are there any discussions about this current version? This is the second opportunity then for the audience to address the board. Don't see anyone in person. Do we have anyone online waiting to speak? We do not. Okay. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
Just as a point of clarification, so we are going ahead with 2.6.
As a first reading.
Because you're going to circle back. Okay. All right.
I move to approve the personnel report dated October 25th, 2021. I move to approve the District 39 Strategic Plan, Engage, Empower, Inspire Action Steps for 2021, 2022. I move to approve the tax year 2021 estimate of levy. I move to approve a public hearing on the proposed levy scheduled to immediately precede the November 15th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education. I move to approve as first reading Board of Education policies 1:10, School District Legal Status, 1:20, School District Organizations and Cooperative Agreements, 2:10, School District Governance, 2:20, Powers and Duties of the Board of Education, 2:30, Board of Education Elections, 2:40, Board Member Qualifications, 2:50, Board Member Term of Office, 2:60, Board Member Removal from Office, 2:70, Vacancies on the Board of Education, Filling Vacancies, 2:80, Member of the Board of Education Oath and Conduct, 2:100, Board Member Conflict of Interest, 2:105, Ethics and Gift Ban, 2:110, Qualifications, Term, and Duties of Board Officers, 2:120, Development of Members of the Board of Education, 2:125, Board Member Expenses, 2:130, Board Superintendent Relationship, and 2:140, Communications to and From the Board. I move to approve a second and final reading of the Board of Education Policy 7:180, Preventing Bullying and Other Aggressive Behaviors. I move to approve Rachel Gold, Eileen Richards, and Gail Schnitzer-Eisenberg to serve as Members-at-Large on the Community Review Committee, CRC. I move to approve to release to the public the executive session minutes of September 17th, 2018, March 22nd, 2021, and June 14th, 2021. I move to approve to maintain as confidential the executive session minutes of March 15th, 2021, April 19th, 2021, May 10th, 2021, May 24th, 2021, June 7th, 2021, and August 23rd, 2021. I move to approve to dispose of executive session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for September 17th, 2018, May 13th, 2019, June 10th, 2019, Sessions 1 and 2, June 17th, 2019, August 22nd, 2019, August 26th, 2019, Sessions 1 and 2, September 16th, 2019. I move to approve the counts payable for bills listed between September 28th, 2021 and October 25th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $744,712.64. O&amp;M Fund, $190,621.04. Transportation, $193,500.32. Capital Projects, $402,579.62. For a total all funds of $1,531,413.62. I move to approve the manual checks issued between September 28th, 2021 and October 25th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $615,848.79. O&amp;M Fund, $29,793.07. Transportation, $353.82. For a total all funds of $645,995.68.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes. The yeas have it, motions carried. So this moves us to conference items. Are there, is there any old business? Any new business? Yes.
Someone might bring it up. Someone else might want to talk about it. Sorry to talk out of turn, but there's a, we already talked about it, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Working Group, which is coming up. And I think Bonnie and I are going, Bonnie and I are going on November 11th. We have a committee of the whole meeting though before, which would be a good opportunity probably for us to talk about what we should be talking about.
Yes, and they did send a memo with their hopes and thoughts for the meeting so we can bring things to you and have ideas in mind before that.
Yeah, it looks like a really nice forum. And there's a history here, I guess, in Willmetta, Intergovernmental Working Group, but it was dropped a while ago. And, and I think the village is trying to pick it back up. So it's kind of an interesting thing. I'm looking forward to it. I'm sure it's, it's Kim. So yeah, but I, I would like you all to consider it. There's a memo in our packet from the village president sent a blanket that lays out kind of what their desires are.
Have some great ideas. Thank you both for representing us on that.
Yep.
Any other new business? Good and welfare.
New story?
Yes. Totally agree. And the students in the room.
Along those lines, I'll say my two children go to Freaky Friday, which was a first for our personal family. And I was teary in the line to drop off because I have no, like, comparison, but every student must have been there. And it just, I mean, it was just an enormous amount of people, and it spoke to me of how excited people are to be together and celebrating in that way. And it just felt very hopeful and celebratory. It was an amazing event. Very grateful. Oh, my gosh.
Amazing. And such organization too. I mean, truly outstanding.
A fifth grader at church told me yesterday he waited in line for an hour for a slushie and that it was worth it.
And that it was worth it. I love it. On that note, I do have some good and welfare. I would like to celebrate and honor our principals who are sitting in the back of the room right now. Some might know that it is Principal Appreciation Week this week. And we are very fortunate to have some amazing, truly incredible, dedicated and hard-working administrators working in our district, serving our students and our staff. And we're so appreciative for your leadership, your hard work especially over these last two years, which have been uncharted territory. And you've provided outstanding leadership to our schools and our staff and our students and continue to show how much you care. So thank you to all of you who are sitting back there getting work done and attending this meeting at the same time. We really appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have need for executive sessions.
Okay. So I seek a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
Second. Great. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson, he's ready?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Bayes?
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.